We're on the matter.
And you had it on. And then once I had it on, it's like my one potential turn into an illegal apostle. I go, Bill, they probably are. But that's like saying I'm not going to give anybody a driver's license.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call it over this meeting of the council. The first item of business is announcements, and Counselor McHugh has an announcement.
I'd like to mention the passing of a little man teacher who taught in the 70s, 80s, and 90s, Carla Moran. She was an art teacher. She was the most accepting, caring educator that I had ever met. She taught a lot of us. Wonderful woman. So I just wanted to mention her passing.
Can we just observe a moment of silence as we recall that life that's been lived on behalf of particularly the children of the town? We also have a matter that's come to my attention that did not make the agenda. I need to ask for the consent of the council to add it to the agenda for assignment to an individual for action, and that is an application for a mobile food establishment for the upcoming town fair this weekend.
I'll move the second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Matter is on it. I would entertain a direction to the town clerk in order to accomplish this matter.
No moved. Second.
Discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Next item of business, unless there are other announcements to be made.
Just so everybody knows, it's a mobile food establishment license. I just said to approve it, so I just want to make sure they knew. Because everybody's like, what do they approve it?
Well, if you're not approving, you're just referring it.
Referring it.
Because that's all you can do.
Just trying to make sure I didn't say something.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Approval of the minutes of June 15th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion.
23 minutes. Second.
Discussion.
Is there a baseball game on tonight?
All in favor of the motion? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Next. Old business. Ratify the execution of a memorandum of understanding entered into by the town administrator. This is great news. We heard from the Rhode Island Turnpike and Bridge Authority, sorry, from Ripta, that the purchase of our van, to which was an 80/20, is now at 100/0, so we have no contribution to make, and we get ourselves a van from them without charge.
Did the solicitor look this over? Because I had a question on Section 2, performance, where it says lien period, where is a lien going to be placed on this for five years? Is that to make sure that we do all the stipulations that they want us to do, and after five years they give us the van? Because we don't have any money involved in it.
Yeah, that lien provision really stems from the fact that it was an 80/20 split on this. It's going to remain. You won't get title to that vehicle until five years lapse.
Right.
Because that's what they call the lien period.
Okay.
During that time, although you have all of the liabilities that would attach to it, after the five years, if the thing's still running, they'll turn title over to you.
Okay.
That also prevents you from selling it or doing anything with it other than what they want you to do with it.
You're exactly correct.
I'll make a motion to ratify the MOU signed by the administrator.
A second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is a first draft of a proposed ordinance to create an agricultural overlay district. If you recall, we asked the solicitor to advise us in this matter, and that's what's before you.
This overlay district for agriculture is limited to the request that was before you. It can certainly be changed later on if the need arises. And what I didn't do, by the way, on page one, you'll notice in Section 14-6.1.3, agricultural overlay district, the boundary of the last sentence is, "The boundary of the AOD shall consist of assessors' plat and then lots." I didn't know at the time what the assessors' plat and lot was for the vineyard, but if the matter is to go forward, it should be placed there. That means that this agricultural overlay district would only apply to the Sakanic Vineyard at this time. Later on, if there are other issues that come up, you can use this section to address those issues for agricultural. Secondly, if you take a look at page two, Section 14.6.1.4, "Subject to any licensing requirements of the town of Little Compton," that means that for subsection one, or any vineyard that has an existing restaurant, a cafe, which this does, they may also include a bar area for the service of alcoholic beverages to visitors. But in the next section, all other Little Compton ordinances, regulations, and license requirements shall also apply to the AOD. Basically, what this ordinance will do, will permit to have the restaurant serve alcohol under the zoning ordinance, limited to this area, but subject to the issuance of proper licensing by the town council. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
I did speak to Tony on this, and so that this doesn't become a full-blown, everybody that's got a farm wants to have a kitchen on it. I suggested they put in, "This establishment shall conform to all state and local ordinances and regulations, and shall have a pre-existing food service and kitchen," which the vineyard does have. So I just didn't want anybody with a farm to just say, okay, so now that I can do that too, which they can if they didn't have a food service in there already.
If they have it already, because you've got Skip and Liz, they've got a kitchen, they serve food too.
And a cafe at Walker's.
Just speak a little.
Oh, my apologies. There's just other establishments that already have food, and we want to make sure they're covered.
Our next action would be, I think, to refer this to the planning board for their review and comment back to us, wouldn't it? This is a modification of the zoning ordinance?
That's correct. Because it's a zoning ordinance amendment, it needs to go to the planning board for their recommendation by state law, for their recommendation as to whether or not this complies with your comprehensive plan. And of course, because it's a zoning ordinance amendment, there's specific statutory requirements for the advertisement, including notice to a butters within 200 feet and notice by advertisement in the newspaper. And that would come back for a public hearing when it's available. I believe it's got to be at least three weeks.
Go ahead, Carol.
Before this goes to the planning board, do we want to put the plat and lot on this so it's specific to the vineyard?
Yes.
Okay. So I got a question for Cynthia. Cynthia, there's not going to be, I think you said to us, it's not going to be an expansion of tables.
So the footprint is the same exact footprint of the cafe that has existed in the past, utilizing this space. This is just an additional menu item to offer. That's all we're asking for. It's the same exact, that main tasting area. Alfresco dining is right in front of the tasting room, weather permitting, and that's obviously seasonal. So it's the same exact footprint.
So it's no intensification of use?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we need a motion to submit this to the planning board for review and get back to us?
The motion should be to refer the proposal to the planning board for their recommendation and set the matter down for a public hearing with advertising, and that would be determined by the town clerk.
You get my motion, Carol? Okay.
Second.
I do want to point out that the last meeting we had when this got kicked off, I just want to be careful that whatever we do can be applied to all establishments in town, as Gary's pointed out. You know, I think one of my concerns with the way it's written now is that we're going to be identifying a specific plat and lot right from the beginning, so we are going to be counting people out unless we identify the other folks in town that this could apply to and include them in this. But I guess that's a discussion for another day.
I think by putting the plat and lot in there, I mean Cynthia came in front of this, and she wanted to get a liquor license. If anybody else wants to do the same thing, I think there's got to be a case-by-case basis. Then they can come in front of us and say, well, if you did it for the vineyard, we'd like to do the same thing, and then we would take that one off. But I just don't want it to be a cop launch, okay, everybody that's a farmer can.
I can't open a bar at my farm?
I thought you already had one over there.
Kind of motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion? Yeah.
Opportunity for the public to speak?
Certainly.
I do have some questions. I'm Christina Carlson. Many of you know me, I'm a flutter to the vineyard. And just a little, as a political scientist, I'm a little bit concerned that there's legislation being made here that is tailor-made for one individual business in town. And I think this is what Andrews remarks today, that it appears that the town council is favoring one business above others and making a change to a town, I don't know what change this is going to be, to a code, that favors only one business. That seems to be generally not the way legislation should go about. And also, I haven't actually received, I think it's going to be incredibly important if this goes forward, for there to be a clear procedure stipulated for how businesses can take advantage of this. It can't just be an ad hoc thing where people come up and, depending on how you're feeling on that day, you get a liquor license or you don't. There needs to be a procedure by which, you know, certain benchmarks are put in place, certain criteria that have to be fulfilled, and that should be set out in advance rather than throwing it in at the end when you're under pressure to do this. And lastly, I would like to see your consideration of what happens if this does not go as we've intended, in particular the discussion about intensification of use. It could be that you add a menu item which fits an unknown need in town for people who need to have whiskey, and then you end up with an intensification of use. So what is the baseline for the level of use that we're talking about? And how would intensification be proven or disproven? Because that will end up before you again, and no one will have any idea for how to measure it. So I would like to see you guys go ahead with this beforehand, set a baseline, set a target, set parameters, and then we know where we are, and we don't end up bickering back and forth with this. That's my wish. You can take action on it or not, but I will be attending the later meetings and put forward the same comments.
Christina, if I might respond to the first of your questions, or first of your issues of singling out an entity, it is common for us to be faced with something that someone brings forward. For example, they might wish to do something with their property that allows them to sell it to another entity which is not the same use, and it's in the residential zone, and we deal with it narrowly, and then we acknowledge that in that conduct of that narrow focus, we are preparing for the possibility that five or six others might come along and say, I'd like to do something there too. So that's why I think we do have to take a methodical approach. But I don't know how a person would otherwise be able to bring forward their desire, in this case, in the residential zone, to do something that is currently not allowed by right in the residential zone. I apologize. Yes?
This is not an individual. This is a business. It's a different entity. It's a different type of entity.
All right.
Profit-making entity rather than an individual wanting to change the use of their particular piece of land.
But what I'm thinking of is, in fact, an entity where, yes, an individual who owned the business sought to purchase a business which had before that been a different business, and he wanted to use the property for something different, and it was in the residential zone. And that process, my point in all that is to say, that individual raised his hand and said, I'd like to present this, and so that's how it initiated. I don't consider this to be greatly different from that in that six farmers don't get together and say, all six of us want to do something, rather this is one agricultural entity. I'm not at all suggesting that gives it some sort of cachet that says, we ought to therefore grant it, because after all, the person is worthy. It is the method by which it's introduced. A single person comes forward to the council and says, I'd like to do something. So personally, I don't consider that unusual, that this is how we would begin the process. I would point out that the motion before us is to send it to the planning board, which could very well determine that this is completely contrary to the comprehensive plan, and we recommend you don't do anything, as a for instance. So I don't, you know, I don't think we're at the edge of the river here in that respect. What I was going to say is, I don't remember your second question. The third was the baseline. I got that. But what was the second?
The second was the procedure for other entities to take advantage of this.
Yes.
For it to become a law, a court, a policy.
A precedent, shall we say.
And then that goes into the discussion.
Okay.
About baselines, parameters, delineation of these things.
I would be hopeful that, were this to be successfully adopted, that others would do that, would come forward and say, I believe I also satisfy this. And we would then have a process by, because ultimately, what we're trying to do is to, in every respect possible, encourage the conduct of agriculture in the town. That's really the intended purpose. And folks can argue about, well, that's not my sort of agriculture. I'd rather that they raise sheep or grow peas or whatever. But that's where we are with the thing. I think that having others come forward is exactly what we want to do if this were to be the first of those.
But I have a question. If this is supporting agriculture, is then the liquor that's being served at this business, is that being made on the property?
No, I'm not suggesting that the sale of alcohol is itself the conduct of agriculture. I'm saying that the person who, the business that owns the ability to have an agricultural entity is allowed to do something that is conducive to the forwarding of that same success in agriculture. And the third is the baseline for intensification. I couldn't agree with you more. We want to be sure that we understand what is present right now, and does what is proposed match that and not intensify that? Yes, sir?
My name is Mary Anderson. I've spoken to this issue in general and specifically to this before. Mr. DeSisto did indicate that this was an approach that he might propose to you, and I believe that some kind of zoning amendment is what's required to make this kind of practice legal as an accessory use to farm properties. I don't object to that. I support it. I share the concern about the single property owner's treatment here. You gave examples of dealing with other property owners. I don't believe it's customary that you've amended the zoning ordinance for that purpose. There are other means, changes of use for pre-existing use on a property, that's one thing. It's already addressed in the zoning ordinance. This is a slightly different approach. I think you had to make the point, there are, I believe there are other current agricultural properties to whom you're issuing a bidding license who would qualify for this now. So the question is, should they have that opportunity in some form right now? The other suggestion I'd offer, this will go before the planning board, is that the nature of the use is currently a prohibited use in the residential zone. It's a substantially different use in a way. I wonder if a provision of this might require for this property owner and for others, it addresses the matter of procedure, whether this kind of use, because it is different and it would apply only to agricultural properties, whether it should require a special use permit, whether that should be a provision of this ordinance, so that other properties are not the same. And there are other provisions of the zoning ordinance, such as parking at the vineyard, where the vineyard for concerts had to see variants for the nature of the parking that they wanted, so that not all agricultural properties are the same. So those are my thoughts. And the troublesome paradox here is that the use, which the solicitor and previous building officials have said is non-permitted, a restaurant, you've given them a bidding license for the same provision of the ordinance, as for a cafe, they're not separate in the ordinance, and you do so for other agricultural properties. Walkers, for one, I think there are a couple of other farms that you give bidding licenses to sell. You've created a paradox where you're issuing licenses to other businesses that are agricultural in a residential zone. So this is a way to try to square it, but it's still a little bit problematic.
Any other questions, comments? Are you ready to vote on the motion which refers this to the planning board for an investigation as to its conformance with the comprehensive plan and any other recommendations they might make? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Does the motion include setting the matter down for a public hearing? It does.
The next item of business is to ratify the actions of the Director of Public Works, the Administrator, and the Council President, and accept a report from him on the award of roadside mowing. Basically, the memorandum before you.
Motion to ratify.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And last of the old businesses is to consider extension of a retainer for the services of Marissa DeSutel, an attorney who has represented the town regarding Mayflower Wind, now South Coast Wind, before the Energy Facility Siding Board.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The vote then is four in favor with Counselor Golemski opposed. Marissa DeSutel intended to be with us this evening and was unable to do so at the last minute, and therefore will be on the agenda for our next meeting, including an opportunity for executive session, should we need that.
Yeah, I think, of course, she goes forward, we can extend the retainer, but I think we need to know the cost associated with it and what we're going to give for that cost, if possible.
I believe that will be part of what we hear in two weeks.
Got it.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I think it was the June 1st meeting, Mr. Marrow has agreed that he should recuse himself from all matters of Mayflower Wind because of the fact that he's a farm.
I didn't say all matters. I said the cable going up the river would affect me. So, I mean, if I'm going to vote on a wind farm offshore, I'm going to vote on a wind farm offshore. It doesn't.
You said it affected your income, which is against.
The cable, the cable going up the river. Okay? Not all wind farms.
On the record, you didn't recuse yourself at the June 1st meeting either, but I disagree. I disagree with what you said.
Okay. Well, following ethics compliant on you. Okay. Thank you.
Our next matter is a presentation from the Little Compton Agricultural Conservancy Trust updating the council on matters associated with the Ag Trust. Mr. Chair.
Hi, I'm Phil Richmond, the Chair of the Ag Trust. I'm just going to introduce the presentation. There's, I want to explain, there's really two motivations behind this. The first is that we have an eagle and rules-based obligation to present an annual report every year. In the past, we've done this in a dry format in a little publication published at this kind of times. You want to now take that opportunity of an annual report, try to expand it, and particularly come to the council and report in person. So this, hopefully, is the first of multiple. The second idea might be that the last year and a half or so, we've gotten a lot of public feedback that people don't really understand what we do, how we do it, how we were created, what makes the decisions that we make. So this presentation includes some of that information that we want to give to you as well as review to the larger public. With that, I'll introduce Cabot. Finally, thanks for having us tonight.
I'm Rusty Cabot, one of the trustees of the Ag Trust. I know the council has a read ahead of this. I've changed the order of the slides a little bit, so I apologize if it's confusing. But we'll start with the creation of the trust.
There we go.
So 20 years roughly prior to 1985, there were a lot of significant changes going on in Little Compton, and the town decided that it needed to take action to preserve its fishing and farming heritage. And this is one of the steps they took. They proficient legislature to create a Little Compton Agricultural Conservancy Trust, and the legislature passed that into law. The primary purpose was to acquire development rights to agricultural property within the town, and that was specifically done in an effort to preserve farming in Little Compton. It was considered at the time, and it's still considered now, a useful tool to help farmers stay on their property and stay farming. You get some value for your land as opposed to having to sell it for some sort of development or other purpose, and you can stay on your property and stay farming. They knew that wouldn't work for everything that we wanted to preserve in town, so we were allowed to do some other things as well, but the primary focus was to buy development rights to agricultural land. So the legislation further allowed the town to levy a special tax. It was first approved in the 1986 fiscal town meeting, which is why 1986 is the starting point for the trust, that is where we could actually start to do business. It's been amended since then with the rate that you see. The real point here is that it's a very unique authority. Only Block Island has this authority besides Little Compton, also for preservation of land, and it was also done in 1985. People have tried it before and after, and it's never made it through the legislature. This is a very unique period in time, and Little Compton's a very unique community to be able to have that. We are funded completely independently from the annual property tax because of this levy. So we talked initially about why the town went to the legislature to get the approval for the Agricultural Conservancy Trust. These three points are just some of the reasons that the trust does business. They're one of several points that are included in the comprehensive plan that the town says is important to what the town is and wants to be, and the trust directly supports five of those top-level goals, and multiple lower-level goals in the comprehensive plan, and tangentially supports the other four. So how do we do business? Basically, we establish our strategic priorities of what we want to accomplish, and in order, this relates back And in order, this relates back to the enabling legislation directly, in order, we want to perpetuate and broaden agriculture as a viable economic enterprise, also something that's in the comprehensive plan. Preserve open space and maintain a network of outdoor recreational areas. So those are the big-picture priorities that we set for ourselves, and they are in order. So if there's competing properties out there, we set our priorities based on our strategic interests, strategic priorities. These flow down into annual objectives, which are more specific about what we want to do to accomplish each one of these priorities. And then we can work out how we're going to approach the annual task of getting that done. How are we going to generate some landowner interest primarily in working with the trust to preserve their property so that we can, in the big picture, preserve the character of Little Compton?
Can I, while we're on that subject, I, as you know, at the financial meeting, there was $250,000 appropriated for tennis courts. And there's been a few people come up to me, and they said, it wouldn't work if we redug the tennis courts down there. They were going to have the same problem because the land's wet. And they were wondering if there was any property that the Ag Trust owned that we could use for recreational purpose for those tennis courts, like over here at the new parking area is going to be at the school.
Actually, that came up at the meeting last night.
Okay.
We bounced it around for a few minutes, quite a few minutes, actually, trying to determine off the top whether there was any place that we could accommodate tennis courts, volleyball, or whatever it is, of course. That discussion about the parking area came up, but it's a small piece of land.
Okay.
So I think it was six tenths of an acre is what we decided last night. So six tenths is not a huge piece of property. If you're going to use it for parking and try to put tennis courts on it, that may not work. There's some other property that the Ag Trust owns in Fee, near the center of town here, but it's kind of wet. So you can see now with the existing tennis courts. And we left that topic more or less unanswered last night. We're still going to bounce it around and see if there's something that will work, but...
The larger point is that if we own property in Fee, potentially as a candidate, there's a lot of factors that go into selecting a planted place. But as we've seen by the priority list, recreation is on it.
Right. Okay.
We talked about the fact that we run through our strategic priorities that flow down to annual objectives, and then how are we going to get them accomplished, which really revolves around generating landowner interest, because this is a landowner-driven process. Until they come to us and say, we're interested in working with you to preserve our property, we can look at it, we can want it really bad, it can be the greatest farmland or the greatest recreational potential in the world, but we can't do anything with it until the landowner says they're interested. Once they say that, and they've placed an application with the trust, then we go through a process of evaluating the property and ranking it, deciding how it fits in with our strategic plans and our strategic objectives for the year. And if we decide that it is something that we want to try to pursue, then we go to the landowner and we start to negotiate about what the part of the possible is, or is to require some rights to that property. And those rights can come in two ways. We've already talked about deed to development rights or an easement, where we put a legal restriction on the property, but the landowner still owns that property and can function within the bounds of the legal restrictions that we place on them. Or we can actually buy the property outright or own the property outright, not necessarily have to buy it, but own the property outright. And we, in each case, we are responsible for stewardship of that property within the bounds of the legal agreement we have with landowner easements and with our own priorities if we actually have the property in Fee. Next. And I've already alluded to the fact that we can purchase those rights, or often we get donations from landowners for the land that they want to have conserved.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
On the last slide, you've got the breakdown, you've got one conservation easement or deeds, and then two, Fee-owned. Is there any resource for residents to look at so they know which lands are available for hunting or open to the public for access to the shore and trails? Is that online?
Yes.
Okay.
On our website, we should have all of that available, or so that people understand which properties are available for public access. We have a process if people want to hunt on our lands that we have them go through so we're sure that they're qualified, they have a firearm, and they've gone through the training that's required.
Thank you.
Those sorts of things. But there is access to that.
Thank you.
One more.
And all through all of this, we have partners that help us. Almost 50% of the acres that we have preserved in town involve one or more of these partners that help us with stewardship, help us with purchase price if required, other items like that. But really, the landowners are the most important ingredient in this whole thing. So what have we actually done? We have protected roughly 2,200 acres as of April of this year. Two-thirds of those are protected by easements, which you see on the chart here, versus the properties that we own. We own about 700 acres and 75 properties that we own outright, either purchased or donated. You can see some of the breakdown there. Clearly, the easements are what we were designed to do, and that's where the focus has been, and that's where the focus will remain. A little further into the details, this chart was manufactured by Carol Entrocki using data that's publicly available, that she has spent time tailoring to Little Compton. So some of this is specific to Little Compton. And particularly when you look at the yellow chart, or yellow blocks at the bottom that says agricultural land, that is land, because of her work, we know that is land that is actually being used for agriculture right now. There are some other parts that are suitable for agriculture, perhaps here where there are fields that get mowed annually, for instance, but they're not being actively used as agriculture. So when you look at these numbers, 730 acres of ag land that we have protected, that's 730 acres of land that's actively being used as agriculture right now. And out of that 34%, out of that 730 acres, 34% of the land, total ag land in Little Compton, has been protected by the trust. So there's more work to be done out there if we want to continue to preserve our agricultural heritage. Now, part of these fields that are not ag, they just get mowed. You see, there's a small sliver there on the Ag Trust portion. We've been actively working to try to get some of those fallow fields back into production. In fact, Craig Hibbit and Josh Rigo both have leases with us for land that was, up until a couple of years ago, fallow. And they put some of that land back in production. I'm particularly excited about Josh. He's a young fellow in town with a young family who's very excited about agriculture. So it's really nice to watch him sort of flourish in that. And he's doing it in a way that's very interesting to me personally. So I hope he succeeds, and we can make that brown little stripe there in the Ag Trust land go away and frankly, work on this also, whether we have interest in that land or not, to help people get back their land back into agriculture. The one thing that you do see here that we get some comments about is forested swamp, for example. And we have interest in forested swamp in Little Compton. Fancy that? There is some. And it sometimes comes along as a package with the good ag land that's out there. Next. And this is an example. This is a property on East Main Road that we preserved via easement. 20 acres, as you see, of hayfield, and another 28 of something else. But it all came as a package. And it was a family who had the farm broken up over time as siblings, you know, took portions of the farm and whatnot. And Kyle wanted to put it all back together, and because we were able to work this easement with him, he managed to do that. And now he's got the farm all back together under one ownership. You see, the buildings are carved out there. We don't have an interest in that. But that allowed him, the interest we do have, allowed him to pull everything back under one roof, so to speak, stay in the farmhouse, keep the buildings, keep the place in agriculture, which is what he has said that he wanted to do for the next generations coming down the road. So this, I'm very pleased with this as an example of what we have done in the past. The other example I want to put out here, this one, we own in Fee, it's right behind the school. Everybody knows it, right? The Ponce property here, we looked at the agricultural land, but with that came 40 acres of other land. So what we paid both for the Jackison property and for the Ponce property was all based on appraisals for the ag land. That's where the value is. But the other stuff came with it. And the Ponce's didn't want to keep the property anymore, hence there was no option for an easement. They wanted to sell the property, they wanted to sell it to anybody who came along. We wanted to preserve the ag land because it's great soil. Great soil also is a great place to build a house. So that was the competing interest here, right? How many houses were going to be put on here? When we bought this property, we do look at these things and try to do what we can in the public interest, and how can we utilize some of the other portions of the property? You see the yellow dotted line there? That's the Dunderie Brook Trail. TNC manages that. We mentioned partners before. TNC and we are working right now. In fact, we've kind of settled on a trail route that we want to put through the Ponce property that will extend the Dunderie Brook Trail to Willow Avenue and allow a more extensive recreational area there as part of that whole system. Another example that has gotten a lot of interest that doesn't have anything to do with ag, but is something that we felt was in the public interest also, was the Almy Creek property, Rackliff property. People who look at our statistics will say, well, you own a bunch of marsh, too. Okay, right. Well, this is something that was worth preserving. Again, we thought it was in the public interest. And we did what we can to preserve it. We're working with DEM as a partner to help make sure that it stays in a manner that it is now, that, you know, is taken care of in the proper way to try to minimize the damage to the marsh by climate change or any other activity, hopefully restore the marsh to some degree. Next. We also bought development rights on a piece of Gabe Ferria's property. It's the south end of Windmill Hill. It's been growing crops for ages, and now it will continue to grow crops for ages. Walkers is back on it this year, so it's very, very good to see. And the last example is Patchett Brook. This again is an easement property, allowed these people to stay on the farm, stay in their house. It's also a watershed into the Watson Reservoir, so it was important for us to help conserve that portion of the property for that reason, as well as the, just the ag reasons that came with it, all land that could have been sold for some other use other than ag, but we've got it preserved and they're able to continue operation.
To be genie happy.
Yeah. What's next? Obviously, we want to continue what we were set out to do. We want to work to make all of our ag land, usable ag land, continue to work with the other portions of our, the town, structure committees and trusts to make sure that we're helping share strengths back and forth and minimizing each other's weakness to get things done and achieve the goals that the council wants, the town wants, and move forward with making the town the way that we want it to be. We're also kind of a change of pace here. We're applying for a grant to fund a couple of studies that will be available town-wide that will look at cost of services and potential future land use, that I think could have a dramatic impact to the planning for the town in the future. And when we get those studies done, we will be back to tell you what the results were. And obviously, at that point, it's open for everyone in town to use.
Open for questions.
Just a comment. The way you presented the wooded wetlands was like a lesser thing. And I know the NRCS is adamant about requiring wooded wetlands because it's one of our major water purifiers. So I think the value of the wooded wetlands may not be to prevent development as much, but it also is a very important thing for all the water we drink.
Yeah, I apologize if I came across that way. It is, obviously, one of our priorities in the comprehensive plan, and it's something we take into account. But it's very difficult to determine which of the wooded wetlands is...
Well, I have a personal interest in the East Main Road property because the streams that run through there run through my farm. So it keeps everything nice and clean. It makes the ducks happy.
You know, they come as a package sometimes, and we're not opposed to the wooded wetlands. Well, we do get some negative feedback about how much we own, or how much we have an interest in.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Thank you for breaking the recent tradition, and we look forward to that continued interaction. Is this presentation intended, or is it already there on the website, on your website?
I intend, obviously, based on the board's concurrence, for it to be public.
Yeah. It will be.
Thank you.
Do that one, hang on.
Other public comments?
There we go.
Thank you very much. The next item of business is a request from the United Congregational Church to use the walking track for a child's race on July 8th.
So I'm all.
I'll second it.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is a request from Barbara Passmore to hold a Little Compton Community Dinner on the Commons on September 10th, 2023 at 3:00 p.m. This is Passmore is with us here. Motion made and seconded. Is there further discussion, or would you have any comments?
No, I'd come with an invite to come.
Be there.
Perfect.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
In favor and tell me who made the motion.
I did.
And you seconded, okay. Thank you.
The next action, or the next item is to ratify actions of the town administrator to apply in conjunction with the school department and the community center for what is called Learn 365 RI Grant Funds.
Motion to approve. But I didn't see in here, okay, I got it now, what the grant was.
Is there a second to the motion?
Ratified. Motion to ratify the action of the town business administrator.
The motion has been made and seconded to ratify the action of the administrator. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is a letter from the fire chief requesting that firefighter Brittany Cunha be removed from probationary status to point as a permanent member.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is, as Board of License Commissioners, a request from Gnome Inc. for a Class F one-day retail beverage license for the Gnome Surf Clambake to be held on August 13th.
Motion to approve with all of correct stipulations for the town.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. It is their discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is communications, a letter from Martina Halsey asking the council to address the matter of the town solicitor serving as a coastal resource management staff attorney, as well as serving the town of Little Compton, as it relates to offshore wind farm projects currently before the CRMC. Mr. Solicitor.
Yes, I'd actually like to say a few things. The first one is, as a lawyer for a public body, like this public body, I don't vote, and I don't tell my clients how to vote. What I do is, when I'm asked a question as to the law, then I give an answer. It's the same for the agency, the Coastal Resources Management Council. That's the first thing. The second thing is, is this letter assumes that there is a conflict. Now, as I told you, I've applied to two boards on this, the State Ethics Commission and also the Supreme Court's Disciplinary Counsel Advisory Committee. Now, the author of this letter knows that because she filed an AP request, which was responded to by the town clerk in a timely fashion. So, I just wanted to bring those points up. I certainly don't want to create negative assumptions for the town council. But I did want to say that, that I think the assertions in the letter are incorrect.
Thank you.
I'm going to say this is getting embarrassing because the solicitor has addressed this multiple times now.
Thank you.
Motion placed on file.
Second. Is there discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The next item of business is a thank-you note from the Little Compton Grange, thanking the town for the partial repairs of the steps at 32 Commons, looking forward to more repairs in the future.
Motion placed on file. Can I ask the town administrator what other repairs need to be done to that building to make it a little bit safer for the Grange members?
The entire front steps need to really be, I mean, we did portion right now. We did some repairs there, but the entire thing needs to be addressed, you know?
Do we have any AP funds to utilize?
We actually had some capital funds that have been allocated at purpose already.
So, those stairs are going to?
The painting of the front of the building as well.
And if you put that out to solicitation?
I have not yet, but I intend to.
Yes. Would the people that are working on the Town Hall be willing to do that while they're in town?
We would have to do an RFP for that. Because it's a separate contract.
Is that over, do you think that's going to be over $5,000?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. At the painting and restoration of the entire front, Bill, actually, Bill Moore and I have discussed that very much in detail. You're looking at anywhere over 25, between 25,000 to 35,000.
Well, that's not much considering how much we're spending on Town Hall. Okay, just long.
Project to make it safe, though, but you're right. We even talked about restructuring the steps a little bit, you know, to be much safer.
I made a motion placed on file. I need a second.
Second. Motion is made and seconded to place on file. All in favor? Are there any opposed? Thank you. Next item is a request from the community center for the roadway in front of the community center to be closed to traffic during the annual summer concert series, specifically three dates in August, 9th, 16th, and 23rd. Is there a motion to approve?
There is.
Is there a second?
Second. With a stipulation to check with the chief, at least, to make sure for traffic control or whatever you normally do. Sometimes they put a cruiser out there.
Yes, the actual closing would be in accordance with their formal process. Motion is made and seconded to approve this request. Is there further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Next is a request from Steven Reuter Lawn and Landscape to renew his license to Hall Refuge.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion. All in favor? And a copy of a notice from Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management regarding application under consideration from Shirley McHugh Shaw Road requesting permission to alter freshwater wetlands. I reviewed this with a document that was given us. I see no issue for the town with respect to this, and I would entertain a motion to place this on file.
Motion to place on file. Should this go to the planning board?
They have a copy.
They have a copy, okay.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded, is there further discussion?
Are accused.
All in favor? There are four votes in favor, and Councilor McHugh has recused. The next item of business is electronic communication received from Kristen Fox expressing her support of the flying of the pride flag at the school.
Motion to place on file.
Kristen Fox here. Motion is to place on file, and seconded is there further discussion? All in favor? And a letter from Barbara Passmore expressing her concern with the school flying flags other than the American flag at the school.
Motion placed on file.
Second. Discussion.
Barbara.
All in favor?
Motion place consent calendar on, motion to file the consent calendar unless anybody wants to call anything for discussion.
Motion's made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor? And the payment of bills. The bills are in two sections. One is fiscal '23 expenditures, the other is fiscal '24.
Motion to pay both sets of bills.
Second. Discussion on that. All in favor? The executive session scheduled is not to be conducted, there being no further business before us. I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
Yeah. It was very important, at least for me, you know, because I haven't.